Okay, would Reverend Ann Crandall please come and give you an occasion and some information about Love Inc.
Okay, before you stand, the mayor asked me to give you a brief overview of Love in the Name of Christ. We represent 20-plus partner churches from a legal road to Imoculi. And during Hurricane Irma, we worked closely with the city and we repaired 76 mobile homes by using over 22,200 volunteer hours. We recently have assisted 125 families who were affected by COVID. We partner with the amazing community development when they have code enforcement issues and some neighbors that are hindered in being able to resolve it. A lot of them want to resolve it, but they can't physically or financially do it. So we work really closely with the city and we very much value, appreciate the relationship we have. So if you could stand, we'll all set the tone for tonight's meeting. Lord, as the world paused during this Easter season, we celebrate the greatest love story there ever was, our Savior laying down His life for ours. We need that same resurrection power to bring peace and unity to our nation. Thank you for this beautiful, prosperous community. These leaders and the staff have tremendous responsibility, which has increased with the challenges of balancing individual safety and health with the public's. Thank you for giving. They work cooperatively and peacefully, listening to the community, to the staff, each other, and then seek your guidance. Expand their time, connect them with strategic resources, and lift the burden that comes with shouldering such great responsibility. Bless them and their families as they sacrifice to lead our community to thrive and to prepare us for the great things you have ahead. We pray that you are honored by how they perform their duties in the leadership position you have given them. In your name, amen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Fred, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? [inaudible] Thank you. We have a forum. We'll call Ann.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilman Purdon.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr. Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilman Corey.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Okay. Approval of the agenda. At this time, I'd like to compliment our city clerk and our city manager for getting, making the agenda items, the green sheets readable, and saving us a lot of green. So thank you, folks. The staff puts out a lot of work. Thank you. No changes to the agenda, so we can move along. The mayor is welcome. Thank you for coming. I see some familiar faces here. And here comes one. And the people that are taking their time to watch us on Channel 98, Benita TV. This is your city. We are your representatives, and we need your input in order to make Benita a better place to live and thrive. At this time, we'll take any public, oh, excuse me. I'd like to have the council people from 1 through 6 to introduce themselves by their district so we can test the sound system. Thank you.
Amy Caramba, District 1.
Jesse Purdon, District 2.
Laura Carr, District 3.
Chris Corey, District 4.
Mike Gibson, District 5.
Trent Forbes, District 6.
And the mayor, and come on, Laura, pick up the pace.
Again, Laura Carr, District 3.
Your microphone works. Thank you. And we move on to consent agenda. Do we have anybody wants to pull anything on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, public comment on agenda items?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know if you wanted to open it up to public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, any public comment on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councils. I am Andres Paz from Adventure. I am the company that has bided for Fiesta Benita Springs, and I've had the pleasure of hosting it in the past. And today, I'm here to request your support for this event and answer any questions that you might have.
Laura Taylor is going to make sure you cross the Ts and dot the Is.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think you have, and it looks like a really fun adventure, so, you know, events, so.
Well, once all the permitting is finalized and we set the date, invitations will go out to everyone, and I hope that everyone can come support and enjoy the event.
Absolutely.
Is that date?
Very exciting. Thank you.
Thanks.
That date is set?
Well, I've proposed a date. Just once I go through all the permitting process and we get the green light, then I'll send those invitations out.
The reason I ask that is because September 18th is the middle of hurricane season.
And we're aware that it's still.
And I'd like to go only one year.
What was that last part?
Permit for only one year, not two?
The, well, I did submit the bid for two years, which is what kind of the, what the outreach committee.
I want to see what happens in one year. You can come back.
Okay, you can do that.
So otherwise, it's a go as far as I'm concerned. Is the city council going to vote on this?
We're still in public comment.
There's a judge to either.
I'm sorry, yes. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, City Council, Charlie Strater, Kent Road, Benita Springs. First off, thank you for funding the efforts of your own Historic Preservation Board to help them highlight and preserve our historic resources. Many of you know that I've thought and promoted that we already have the potential of a historical village. Most of us call it Old Benita or Downtown. Regarding the Historic Village feasibility study, this study along with the preservations, excuse me, the presentations by Robert Gibbs helps confirm that we have a viable development theme for downtown, that of building on our old Florida character. We should play the cards we are dealt. We are a little late to the preservation card table, as we have lost some historic buildings that should have made great retrofits, but better late than ever. In regards to heritage tourism, for example, I can attest that there is indeed interest in downtown Benita. In addition to past surveys of locals and visitors, for years, I have conducted history walks in our downtown. Indeed, this year has been the most popular. The seven tours to date have averaged 56 paying participants. Being in the travel industry and exploring much of Florida, it is obvious that people are interested in more than just condos and shopping malls. They often look for uniqueness and variety. Our downtown is well-positioned to fill such niches, and our city is still growing. While the city cannot totally control what happens in the private sector, careful and creative planning can shape it. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, John.
Council. I'd like to thank you for everything you do.
John Pano.
My name is John Pano. I'm with CGT Kayaks and also part of the Historic Preservation Board, and I just want to say thank you for funding it and how important our history is. People don't realize, but our history pretty much starts right here in Benita Springs with Ponce de León, and how important that is, and yet, we don't have a historic district on this southwest coast. Many of the major cities have historic districts with botanical gardens and zoos, and these are very productive attractions for their downtowns in their areas. And so, in fact, so much that, under some research that I was just doing, I found that Target and many large franchises are now looking to move from mall locations into historic districts and try to pick up that feeling and pick up that advantage. So again, thank you for all you do, and keep funding the historic preservation.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Okay, consent agenda?
Move to accept?
Second.
Any more comments?
Mayor, if you're interested in separating the years, you should pull the item.
Yeah, okay. I should need to pull that C. I feel that a two-year commitment is too much. I'd like to limit it to one year. And if it gets rained out, that the city, Laura Carr, and I mean Laura Taylor is here, Laura, explain how, if it gets, if we get rained out, what happens to the down payments and stuff for these people? I want this event to happen, but I don't want to commit for two years. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Laura Taylor, Communications Director. If the event was to have a rain out, then we would work with the applicant to schedule a different date. When the pandemic happened, we had many applicants that had to postpone their event, and we worked closely with them to make sure that they could plan it for a future date that would work for them.
Okay, any questions? Can we vote on amending?
Laura, there's like the 17th and 18th, is it the reverse? So they set up, because it goes the 18th and then it goes backwards?
21 and 22.
So, yes, it is, it is reversed. So this year, it would be on Saturday, the 18th, and then the following year, if you're approving both years, it would be on the 17th. And we also, at this point, council is just reviewing whether or not you would like Adventure Southwest Florida to move forward with the permitting process to host the event. We did bid this event out, and we received one submittal, and it was from Adventure. They also did it last year for us. So once, if council did approve them to host the event, they would work closely with staff through the permit process.
I'd move to approve.
Is the amendment, the one year?
No.
Second.
What is the motion there?
The motion is to approve the selection of the RFP as presented, so, two years.
You got the second, Jesse? Roll call.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
No.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
We would now need a motion to move the balance of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Very good. Now we have the pleasure of Tony Lee giving a presentation from the Outreach Committee. You're all dressed up tonight, Tony.
Good afternoon. There's some slides. Thank you. Good afternoon, council. Can I take my mask?
You take it off.
All right. Mayor Steinmeier and Councilman Jesse Purdon, who's our rep, and then all the other members of council, thank you for your support of the Outreach Advisory Committee. We believe that we're in our second and rolling into our third year of existence as an outreach committee, and we can advance a slide, too. So, some of the things that we've worked on as a committee, I thought it was important just to give you all an update. Some quick census data, so 23% of the 60,000 residents in Benita are Hispanic, according to the census. 3% are black or African-American. 22% are born-born. About 5,000 veterans in our area, and 6% identify as having some sort of disability. And when you think about diversity and inclusion, you look at it as everyone as a whole. So that's why it is a circle and not any other shape on that diaphragm. But we don't look at diversity and inclusion as black and white. We really are trying to be inclusive of everyone in the city and giving them a voice and a place to come to talk about some of the issues so that we don't have to bring all of those issues before you as council, but we can also maybe try to be a voice or advocate. So in the issues of education, we've had the president of Hodges University come talk to us about the things that Hodges University has done to become a Hispanic servant institution and the programs that they've offered. We've had District 7 Kathleen Morgan come to talk about education from the school district and share with us, you know, what, what can we do as a community to make sure that our students are graduating with high school degrees and moving forward with college? So about 88% of the citizens of Benita have a high school degree, and about 37% of them have a backwards degree or higher. In the area of healthcare, we, you know, the pandemic happened. I've had a conversation with several of the council men and women that are here today about what can we do for the safety of our citizens during the pandemic. So we launched Unidas Benida, United Together, where we had masks that were provided by the council. So thank you for those masks, and we distributed all of those masks out into the community. And we had Sheila Morales, who I think you've recognized here, for her service of getting women and men to sew masks in the community. That was a joint effort that was led through the Outreach Committee to the community. There are other health issues that we love to tackle, but the pandemic kind of made that our first charge. Safety and recognition, we recognize law enforcement for their service. During the holidays, we're out there with law enforcement, giving out gifts to the community. I know that Jesse Purdon, Councilman Purdon has done that. I've been out there as well, giving out those gifts to the kids. And then also, we are looking to do more of that, recognizing members of the community that are doing, doing the right thing. There's so many communities in the nation that are focused on what is going wrong, and our committee is really trying to focus on what is going right. And we want to reward those citizens that are doing the right thing. In terms of health and wellness, we have one of the most popular soccer fields in the area. I mean, every time you drive past that, feel they're being utilized. And we really appreciate the council's support of keeping those fields into play. And when they're not into play, we hear about it on the Outreach Committee of what we need to do to improve the quality of the experience for those soccer players and the other sports teams that are utilizing that play area. In terms of cultural diversity, inclusion, and experience, we've had some of, every walk of life come and speak with us. We've had members of the LGBTQ community come and address our group. We've had, we recognize MLK Day during that, during that holiday. We recognize the Spanish Heritage Month. And then we, you know, one of the things we do, which you just voted on as a council, which we're so grateful for, is kind of celebrate the heritage and the culture in our community, which is called Fiesta Benita. And that, that was by no design in itself. So there's a lot of things that are happening in Outreach, and I think it's great that this committee was started during a proactive time. Our, our country was in a different place when it was created, and there's been a lot of rhetoric of around the country and communities probably across the United States are trying to figure out what they can do to improve equity, social justice, and the things that are happening. And you can say in Benita that we've already done that. We were ahead of the curve on this issue. We are listening to our citizens. We are providing them with a place and an outlet and a voice to handle these types of issues. And not only that, we're moved forward. We're in a state of action. We, they're already working. We're addressing the pandemic. We're addressing education. We're addressing healthcare, and we're addressing cultural diversity. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my report. I hope that you can join us at an Outreach Committee meeting in the near future, and every council member, every citizen can join us and be a part of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you, Tony. You know, the Outreach Committee is very important to me. I was the first chair of that committee, and you guys have grown in leaps and bounds. Adventure, Mr. Paz, you have done Fiesta Benita since the very first one. I remember sitting at a table with you and Mayor Simmons and a couple others way back when we were discussing this, and the first Fiesta Benita was great. The second one was even better. You doubled the numbers. And then we got into the situation of 2020, and you still put a very beautiful thing together virtually. I'm really excited to see if you guys get to go live again. You guys just, I'm really proud of you guys as a committee, so keep up the good work, and I'm very much looking forward to a live Fiesta Benita. So congrats on the contract, and good job to you, Tony. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Councilman Purdon, but we can't do what we do without Debbie and Laura Taylor helping us stay organized, so a lot of credit to them as well.
That's for sure. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Okay, here we go to Historic Village. And myself being a mayor of surveys many times, it's of great interest to me.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Ellie McEwen. I'm in your Public Works Department, and I, in my excitement, I think I jumped the gun. Mike has an introduction first, so I apologize.
Thank you. Mike Fiegung, Community Development for the Record, and I'm the staff liaison to the Historic Preservation Board. Very briefly, just wanted to extend a thank you on behalf of the board for agreeing to allow Phase 1 of this feasibility study to be conducted. The Historic Village concept has really been a labor of love for this board for many, many years. It's a concept that's widely used around the entire world, so it made sense, to a certain extent, to see how that concept could or could not fit within the confines of Benita Springs. We do have the chairman here as well, Jay Welsh, who's the chairman of the Historic Preservation Board. I'm going to turn it over to him for a few historical comments about the Historic Village concept for Benita, and then we'll turn it over to Ellie with a brief presentation regarding Phase 1 of this feasibility study.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Jay Welsh. I am the chairman of the Historic Preservation Board of the city of Benita Springs, and I would just like to give you a brief retrospective with regards to how all this started and developed. For the past seven years and under three chairmen, the Historic Preservation Board has diligently been working on this concept. Chairman were Terry Schmidt, then Dallas Reward, who was a highly valuable motivator for the board and this project, and then me. Let me read you just the beginning of a memo from 2004, which was the beginning of this potential project. During a recent periodic meeting of the Historic Preservation Board of the city of Benita Springs, Assistant City Manager John Guchado, so this is back from 2004, John Guchado made the remark that the city council not only appreciates the achievements accomplished by the Historic Preservation Board in the past, combined with approval of grant programs for designated historic structures, but also supports the idea and the vision of possibly forming and establishing a historic village in Benita Springs. Former councilman and board member Alex Grant already suggested during earlier board meetings, again, this was before 2004, that this topic does need special attention. Based on the city council's direction, board member Welsh, that is me, offered to provide an evaluation of this possible project. With his background as an architect and project development consultant, combined with extensive experience in terms of historic structures from his work in Europe and the US, including advisory and curator services, to municipal and private organizations concerning projects like this, he prepared the summary of the potential of such a historic village. So today, about seven years later, we are at a milestone where we, the Historic Preservation Board, wanted to give you all an overview of the current status. And with that, I would like to give the microphone over to Ellie McEwen.
Thank you. Thank you. Now I get to tell you the good stuff.
Okay.
So I have a brief presentation. It has lots of pictures, very few words, so I think it'll help formulate the village concept for you and the marrying, if you will, of historic past as well as today and So Jay and Mike have covered this, but it could not have been accomplished had it not been for the Historic Preservation Board. Parker Mudgett Smith was hired with the partners to do the market analysis was Randy Gross Development Services, as well as Landscape Architecture of David Sacks. So what is the concept? What, the idea is that it's to create a mixed-use village. The location, it should be a destination location. There should be room for residents and visitors. It's the rehabilitation of historic structures along with the addition of modern additions to it. It's a location for niche development, if you will, smaller retail, smaller cafes, offices, that sort of thing. The committee, the board was very adamant about including art as well as an audience venue in the, the whole concept, bringing people into the village to, to recognize the jewel. It would, at the same time, the historic portion of it would celebrate our history, and it would enhance our image. These are, I could stand here and tell you all day long, historic, modern, blend them together, this is what it looks like. But I believe these pictures say a thousand words. This really gives you a feel for, for what we're talking about. There's some other examples. This is a very, this is a local example. If you have ever driven on I-75 going to downtown Fort Myers, you've probably traveled on Martin Luther King Boulevard, Junior Boulevard to get there. The old train depot in downtown Fort Myers sat vacant for a number of years. Parker Mudgett Smith was commissioned by the city of Fort Myers to rehabilitate that building. At the same time, it was understood that additional space was, was also needed. They combined the historic depot with all of the modern addition. It is called the Collaboratory now, and if you haven't gone through there, I would encourage you. It's, it's a beautiful. It's, it's a beautiful, beautiful building. The addition is, they used all the green building concepts. So it's a very efficient building as well. These are some more examples of the combination of, of structures. This is, the incorporation of landscaping pathways, walkways, that sort of thing. These are, one of them is in Tennessee, and I've forgotten where the other one is, but it will give you an idea of the magnitude that, that could be incorporated. So when we were, when we first started looking at the concept and looking at the feasibility of a historic village, we did not look at, we did not want to look at a very, at a specific site or a number of specific sites. We, the board felt like it would pin them in, if you will. And so we looked at generic sites all throughout the city. We classified in two different categories. One was a highway or destination-type land as well as community or downtown concepts. So when we started looking, getting into, the, the board looked at four acre sites, six acre sites, eight acre sites, and 10 acre sites. And so there was a market analysis done as a first step, and then the second step was the performa. So in the market analysis, what we looked at is uses. We looked at the viability of, of the concept and the existing conditions. In the performa, we looked at how much would it cost? What would land costs be? What would development costs be as well? We have, one of the tasks that, that we asked Parker Mudgett to put together was a site plan. So this is a little hard to read, but, but if you look at it, it's a, and I can give you a hard copy later on. It's a, a combination of office, retail, small cafes, historic buildings, new buildings, new additions with historic buildings, as well as landscape walkways. You can see the beautiful lake that's surrounding or in the middle. There is a location for audience venues, in, in addition, a sculpture park as well. So you have the market analysis in front of you. It's, it's a very detailed report, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on it unless you have very specific questions. The performa, we will go through very briefly. We had, we came up with three different scenarios. The first one looked at a six-to-eight acre site with 18,000 square feet and 70,000 square feet of additions along with infill parcels. And we had a return on investment of plus or minus 1% for that particular scenario. And this was a destination site, so it would be a highway. It would be a parcel located on a major highway like 41. The second scenario that was reviewed was a four-and-a-half acre site, a much smaller site with only 5,000 square foot, feet of historic with additions, 20 parking spaces, land cost, which also includes all of the, the improvements, water sewer, stormwater retention, that sidewalks, that sort of thing. Again, we had a return on investment of plus or minus 1%. And then the final scenario that we looked at was, again, a four-and-a-half acre site with much more intensity, with 7,000 square foot of historic buildings, 27,000 square feet of additions, 135 parking spaces, and this gave us a return on investment of plus or minus 8%. Now, I'm going through these very quickly, and again, because we didn't have an actual site in mind, these are generalized numbers and returns. And these were all in December 2019 dollars. Jay touched on this before, but I think it bears repeating, without the Historic Preservation Board, this was taken at McSwain House. I'm so sorry. My brain just went dead for a minute. And so you can see all the smiling faces. So they are totally committed to what they're doing and, and working to preserve the history of, of our community. They sincerely appreciate your, your generosity in funding this, this feasibility study. So what happens now? You know, the committee reviewed this presentation and felt like, you know, it was worth pursuing a Phase Two, if you will. And they saw that, they want to further define the scope of the project, the mix of uses, the public enhancement, that sort of thing, as well as start to look at a site-specific location. Development of, the recruitment of a developer is critical, and the identify, the identification of historic structures that, that could be bought and moved onto a site. And then finally, how to fund it. So they will be looking at strategies to, to look for funding. So I do have Dr. Tyler Patac on the phone. He is with Parker's Mudgett Smith. He is available if you have specific questions, and I'm here, Jay is here, and Mike is here. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, this is, I'm on the Historic Preservation Board Committee now, or lazy on. And how much money did the city put into this Phase One?
$30,000.
Any other questions?
Well, I did spend a little time looking at the market report, and I think what, if I read it correctly, the conclusions were that it would not be privately feasible, that any of the scenarios that were presented would require some kind of participation. It wasn't clear who they were talking about, but I assume it was the city. And so I'm not exactly sure where we, where we could go with this. And even in this pictorial presentation that you gave for Scenario 1C, it's talking about having a downtown focus. And where, where would you even get four-and-a-half acres downtown? Is my first question. And my second question is that there's no consideration for the cost of land. So that, that a return on equity at 8% will not hold when you have the full, full end cost. So I have a couple of issues with the presentation here, and even where we would go with this. So I don't know if it's because I haven't looked in, into it as thoroughly, but the conclusions were mentioned in the market analysis. I, I think I'm pretty much quoting them.
And I, I will agree with you. The struggle that we had was we didn't have a specific site. Once you have identified a site, you can look at, you know, all the characters that are, that they bring to that site. The, that would come, more specificity will come in the Phase Two.
The only place downtown that I know we have four-and-a-half acres would be the Bamboo property. And I don't know, is that, is that what's being recommended?
No, that property, we're not recommending that, or that's not part of the study. You know, it was just a downtown concept, so.
But my question maybe, do we have any open land downtown? That's my question. If it is, where is it?
You're, you're absolutely right, Councilwoman Corumba, and I think that's one of the things that the board was struggling with as well. And I'm going to, I'm going to slightly amend a little bit of what Ellie was saying and say that if a future phase were to be conducted for this feasibility study, it would probably deal with refining a lot of the data that was presented in Phase One. Because while we were able to answer certain questions, we also ended up having a lot more questions about certain ideas. And one of those questions was feasibly an actual location to make something like this work. So the, the acreages that were thrown out as part of Phase One, maybe that's not appropriate. But it was appropriate to go through the exercise to get to the answer. So perhaps a Phase 1A would be scaling back, scaling down, expanding the search area, things of that nature. The board had many of the same questions and concerns that you have.
Yes, Jesse.
This is, yeah, and this is Tyler Patac. Can I just, hello, everyone. I'm, I just want to mention one thing about Scenario 1C. You had mentioned the land costs were, were omitted out of that scenario, and that's true. We did that on purpose. That scenario was if we had a developer onboard who would be purchasing and donating the land. That's why that, that's why the land costs in that scenario are listed at zero. What it, one of the things that it was able to do was to increase the return on investment to about 8% over the, over and above the, the previous scenarios, which involved the more participation with the city, the land costs and so forth, which resulted in those very, very low returns on investment.
Yes, Jesse.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only issue, okay, what is Phase Two, Mike, where'd you go, Mike? What does Phase Two consist of, or a 1A look like? I mean, because my issue is much the same that, okay, so we've spent $30,000. Now we don't know, and we still don't know where it would go. We don't know what it might cost, and none of these scenarios really scream that they will be profitable according to the analysis. And then that leads me to believe we're potentially talking a public-private partnership. We already bought a zoo on accident once. I don't know necessarily that. If we don't have the funding in line and we don't have an idea where it's going to go, I'm not saying I don't want a Phase Two, but how much do we want for Phase Two? Because with, with spending 30 grand and still not knowing where it can go, what we can possibly do, I, I just have an issue just spending more money on that because, quite frankly, it just doesn't seem like the most efficient use of funds at this juncture. I'd rather they come to us with a, hey, here's the plan, here's where it would go, here's what it would cost, here's three options. That's fine, but this is kind of pie in the sky for me if we're going to keep spending money. It's not a huge ask. I'm open to listening, but if it's expensive, I'm kind of, we're 30 deep, and we really don't know much at this point. And that's not a knock on, on anybody in the process. I'm just saying, as far as, you know, my desire, and I'm one person, to spend more money, I have to have a better idea where we're going with those dollars.
You're absolutely right, and the board, and again, speaking for the board, they, they would absolutely agree with everything that you just said, which is one of the reasons why at this time they are not asking for additional funds to go forward with an additional phase. There needs to be some retooling, but it was still important to get some of these questions answered. And now that we have, there will be some retooling of the data and the numbers with regards to future phases. Ultimately, the goal is to do what Council Perdon just laid out. This is a very preliminary version of that, and yes, to a certain extent, it did help answer some questions about, you know, the, the pie in the sky versus the realism approach. It was still very important to go through that exercise to a certain extent. But at this time, they are not planning on asking for any additional funds. They realize it needs to be retooled.
Thank you. And, and it's very thorough. I actually, I'm, I'm pretty excited with how much content we have here. So thank you very much.
Laura, do you have a comment?
I commented on this a few meetings back, and as I was the liaison, now you are the liaison to the Historic Preservation Board, and it came back. No fiscal possibility, period. So I was sort of surprised that we were even here, but I understand that we want to just, I guess, keep it circulating, but realism is, we don't have the money. We don't have the land. So retool really, really big time.
Thank you, Laura. Fred, do you have anything to say on this?
No, I, well, I, I agree with what Jesse said. You have to have a site, and once you have it, you don't have a forever to get the money, whether it's the developers going to buy it and donate it, or whether we're going to try and find grants or some way to buy it. So, but I think that, the key thing is we have to have a realistic site and a realistic idea of what you want to try and do.
Thank you, Fred. Mike, you have any comment?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I really don't see the feasibility of it. I mean, we've already said there's really no land. I, I would think the best way would just be to preserve the buildings where they are, you know, as they come up for sale, you know, trying to find somebody that wants to buy them and rehab them or another way around it to, to take care of them and keep them there. But yeah, I mean, we already know how much it costs to, to move the Goodbred Grocery Store, so it's a, especially not having the land, but even then looking at having to move X amount of properties, I just don't see the, the reality in it. So I, I would be much happier just taking care of the buildings where they lie.
Chris?
I just need some more time to think about it. It is an intriguing idea. I think if we can put a little more substance to the, to what we're talking about, at least give them a chance to retool what they've already done and, and come back to us. I think it's worthwhile to keep the thing alive and, and see if we can resuscitate the idea enough that it stirs all of our interest. So I'm not ready to throw the baby out with the bathwater. Let's, let's, let's allow them to continue to work on this.
Yes. The Historic Preservation Board is set up to preserve old homes that are, that need being remodeled or preserves, that need a new roof that the owner can't, can't afford to do. They have remodeled several homes. I mean, brought them up so they're not blighting the neighborhood. That's, that's supposed to keep the property values up in the neighborhood by helping the owner keep up these old houses, because they can be pretty expensive. And being a government agent, higher property values is good for everybody except the people that got to pay the bills. But they, they're not on a purpose. The purpose is not to move buildings around, but that's my opinion. Any other comments? Any other comments?
Mayor and Council, the intent of today was just to provide you with an update on the $30,000 report. Of course, we'll be able to put this on the website, on the Historic Preservation Board's website page. So there is any outside interest, people would be able to see that as well. I know the Historic Board is not, would not be requesting funding in next fiscal year, and staff is not recommending funding in next fiscal year for the, for a future phase at this time. Should market conditions change, or updated information come, we would provide that to the Council in advance.
Okay. Ellie, are there any houses that are, that have applied for grant money for rehabilitation that you know of?
I think I would ask Mike to answer that for you.
We haven't had any for this fiscal year yet.
So, so how much money was grant, was allocated last year for this proj, for the type of project?
The city has been very generous in allocating $50,000 over the last few fiscal years to go towards grants. Usually, the majority of that money is spent on the 20-something designated structures that the city does preserve, and, and, and do their best to maintain. The other thing is, over the last couple of years, any unspent money, the Board has agreed to give to the Good Bread Grocery Fund.
Yeah, I see that, well, I call it the Dixie Moon, it's, it's been, been cleaned up and repainted, it still looks nice. When we come to the budget later on this year, we're gonna decide. Since it's been moved, it seems that the grants are not available to us. We've been trying for two or three years to get grants to help us out, but that doesn't seem to be coming. So that's another reason I, I am afraid of this historic village, that we have to move all these houses, so. Okay, I think we have all the information we need. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, well, Eagle Cam, do we have anybody here from the Eagles to speak to us about Yes, it's the American way, and why not, everybody else takes care of their Eagles?
Good evening, Council. I'm Laura Gibson with your Community Development Department, your environmental specialist, and I was asked to give a brief presentation on the current status of the Eagles in the city, and possib, the possibilities of providing a camera on a nest for public viewing. So I have just a few slides to give you that information. And in coordination with U.S. Fish and Wildlife and Florida Fish and Wildlife regulations, the city has its own bald eagle ordinance for the purpose of maintaining a stable or increasing nesting bald eagle population within the city. There are currently eight active nests within the city limits. I have active in parentheses here, because that is a defined regulatory term, that means a nest, that shows or showed evidence of breeding by bald eagles in that nesting season. We had this past year, five pairs attempted nesting. The season starts October 1st, and ends about May 15th, or when the eaglets have fledged and no longer need support from the, the parents, although they do hang around for, for some free, free meals. So there, there are three nests that are still considered active. That means the nest in a buffer area of 660 feet around the nest continue to remain protected, and they're, they will be considered active for five nesting seasons after the last nesting attempt. And sometimes pairs create an alternate nest as, as well, so that, that is, is also protected, because sometimes they switch back and forth between nests. This year, we had seven eaglets from those five nesting attempts, and six fledglings so far, expecting the, the next one any day now. And compare that to when we started with the ordinance in 2010, there were only three nests and five fledglings that year.
I'm sorry, how many nests do you say we currently have?
There, there are eight active nests. There are a few more inactive nests that are, where the nest is, is still intact in the tree, but it is not, it hasn't been nested within, in five years, so.
Eight active pairs, so 16 all day that are hanging out in Benita.
Well, it's, it, some of the nests may be alternate nests. That's why I, I don't think that's gonna, that's a solid eight pairs, and then, you know, 16 adults. It's hard to say, though, because of the way new nests have moved around, and, yes, so, it's hard to pinpoint.
They sleep around?
Exactly. So.
They say they mate for life.
The challenges of protection are habitat loss. They tend to nest near, near the water, and in very tall trees. They like to be the tallest thing around, they don't like to have anything taller than them, and that's what the city's ordinance covers, critical nesting habitat protection to provide for that. Another, the common challenge is construction and human interactions that can cause take or disturbance to the eaglet, eagles or eaglets. They are, they seem to be coming, becoming more urbanized, but irregular work such as roofing can cause disturbance, which we have to, to be cautious about. They have competition from owls, it is a common occurrence for great horned owls to overtake bald eagles' nests. And also osprey, especially if they're near the Gulf side, ospreys will attack them a lot. And more, the leading causes of mortality are from trauma and poisoning in Florida. That is usually from collisions with cars, but also injuries sustained in territory flights. They, eagles have a, a specific territory, once they, they establish a nest, and, and that, this happens with a lot of species, when their territories are limited, then they have some, they can have fights and amongst each other. And then some unknown causes, especially, there's some eagles that don't make it, that, and we just don't know why, we can't retrieve them from the nest. Like, last year, we had one eaglet that died in, in a late stage of development before fledging, which is not very common, it's more common for them to die at earlier stages when they're younger. So some current protect, protections and observation opportunities. The known let, nest, nest locations are available through the Fish and Wildlife, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission and Audubon Birds of Prey Center websites. I actually discovered our newest nest on a cell tower through Facebook, so it's somewhat easy. People, you know, get excited about bald eagles, and so they, they talk about it a lot, and, and that's, that's a good source to find. There are volunteer opportunities through Audubon Birds of Prey Center. They train volunteers to monitor eagles. And no surrounding municipalities that I surveyed have regulations specifically on Eagle cams. They defer to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and I provided that, that guidance to you. And I did speak to one municipality that said that they would consider requiring a bald eagle management plan, or BMP, BEMP, for, for private cameras as well. So the, the only known camera in this area, right on a nest, is our, the private cameras in North Fort Myers, that you've probably heard of around here, they're pretty popular, and on an offsite, off-nest camera at one of the nests in Benita Bay. And so considerations I, for you to think about in making this decision is, there could be an increase in, in traffic, in foot traffic, or, or car traffic to a nest, if it's a known location, would, and, which could cause a disturbance or take to a nest. That, that would likely be reduced if it was in a gated community, although those people could also, you, you never wanna get really close up to a nest, to, when you're observing a nest, when it's, when it's nesting season. And Ali County Fish and Wildlife Service and Crow had experienced increased calls and emails from the, the privately owned Eagle Cam in Fort, North Fort Myers. So there's, there would be an increase in communications, particularly when something abnormal happens in the nest, and if there's any chat that could go on, on that site as well, discussion about what's going on, that would, that would need a moderator. Some eagle operators have experienced threats, even from what's going on, 'cause it's biology, it's, it's just, you're gonna see what, what's going on. Yes, sir.
Can you bring this to a close?
Can you say that again? Sorry.
Could you bring this to a close?
Yes, yes, sir. And there, there is an offsite, a nest that has a camera offsite that just streams, just selects videos of the eagle going to the nest, but doesn't film in the nest, so you would avoid having to, all of the, the possibly unpleasant things to, to see. And, and it's possible that, that an eagle could stop using a nest when you, after you install a camera, as well, and then you need to get property owner approval, or whoever's the camera is, is crossing at the same time, too. That's all I have.
Your recommendation is to put an Eagle Cam on one of our trees?
So Mayor, we were asked to come back to Council with some background information about how you could film eagles, if, if you wish to pursue that as, as Council. I was also asked to give some information previously, pre Irma, you had $15,000 in the budget to provide for an Eagle camera at, at an eagle's nest that was on park property. That's not been in the current budget for a few years now, but we were asked to bring back some information on what communities around us have cameras, what the procedures were for that, and if there is an interest from Council for us to pursue providing a, a camera, or, or working with, on, with a private property owner. We wanted to lay out what that process was. We're not necessarily recommending that we move in that direction, but this was information we asked to bring back.
Oh, thank, thank you. Any comments? Fred?
No, I don't have any comment.
Mike?
I'm good, thanks.
Chris?
Yeah, I support the idea. One of the things that has bothered me, and is not related to the Eagle Cam, although I would like to see the cam in operation to give people an opportunity to learn more about eagles, is that, is the fact that after Hurricane Irma, the River Park location was used to store, dump, whatever you want the proper term is, hurricane debris. And it's my understanding from the Eagle Preservation Society in Benita Springs, and I don't know if you know Jim Unlon, they're not in Benita Bay, that is highly regarded. But that was the largest nesting area of bald eagles in lower 48 states. And it's always been one of my desires, that somehow we see if there's a possibility of interesting the public in terms of doing the research, support, raising funds, whatever, to try to re-establish River Park as a nesting area. So, you know, this is something that I think contributes to that, and so it would be something I would support.
Amy?
Well, I was one of the people that asked to get a clarification here, because when I came on the Council in 2016, I think is when we put that 15,000 in there to have a cam, but we didn't have any information, we didn't know it, we didn't really know what we were asking, I have to say. So I, I do think, I have some concern about following up on it and having the cam operating under conditions of nature, where people would get upset when we would lose eagles because of the violence that happens there. So I would like to pursue some alternative methodologies, but I don't wanna just have this, I agree with Chris, that, I don't know if we could, one thing I don't know is if we could encourage somebody to, one of, one of the eagles to have a nest at River Park, now the tree is gone, because I don't think we could, as a human being, could influence that, but I don't know that much about eagles. I know that there are supposedly eagles' nests in the community in which I live, I have no idea where it is, but we see eagles there all the time, and we personally, I personally observed a, a, a fight between a pair of osprey and, and eagles, and the eagle won. But the osprey nest is still there, but, and the, and the eagle hangs around, but I don't think they took over the nest, I don't even know if they even do that, so. I think that we need a lot more information before we pursue it, but I don't want it to just die, because I too would like to have a cam. I think that would be a great asset for the community, but we'd have to have, control it in a different way than they do up in Fort Myers, where they are having all those problems. So I don't know if we could continue doing that, or.
Yes, Jesse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we've all seen Pritchard's cam in North Fort Myers, it's awesome, I mean, you have, how many hit, probably more hits on that than we get on our city website, I'd imagine. So I think it could be very beneficial. I'd like to know what it costs, and I'd like to have some idea of where it might be geographically. I see one on Big Hickory, that's pretty neat, 'cause it's on the water, there's a number by the Imperial, that would be great. I, I'm not really concerned exactly where, but if, I think it would be a good thing for the city that I could potentially sport, if it's not a crazy, if it's not a crazy price tag, so I'd like to know what that would look like. So, thank you.
Laura?
Well, I view the eagles, little I know about them. They're the top of the chain in the vulture family, they will do just fine. I know where a few hang out, I love to go over and try to catch them, but I don't wanna share that, because it just brings people. So let them be. I mean, why do we have to track them? Why don't we just let them be, and, and if anyone harms them, then we do something. But I would not spend money on protecting places that by protecting, we, we bring attention to. And more foot traffic, and more, that was one of the issues we had with, where we had the cameras set up, that all the people were going there to see them. So I'm not gonna share where I go visit my eagles.
Well, thank you, Laura. I, I, I agree with your comments.
You're welcome.
Wildlife should be left alone. I worry about the property value of the people that have the pleasure of having an eagle nest on, within 600 feet circle, that's a lot of, lot of ground. The eagles, since 1963, have made one heck of a comeback. I just read thousands and thousands of them, as opposed to back in 1960, and... And I don't care. We got, we got the money. People have an interest in seeing them. I don't know how we keep it secret, but it doesn't matter to me if we invade their privacy, we invade everybody else's privacy. Thank you. Do we have any direction for the, for the staff?
More information.
I'd like to see what it costs.
And I'd like to see no ma-
You want to investigate the cost?
So we would investigate the cost and see where there could be potential partnerships to locate them on property.
All right. Thank you very much.
Maybe one of the, you know, maybe there's one over, I'm just saying, maybe Shangri-La has one, and maybe they're like, hey, we'll pay for the installation. We don't know. I mean, there's a possibility, some of these are private places that would enjoy the idea of a partnership with us, and then maybe we don't have to come out of pocket, so.
Yeah, I can say, Jesse, we're, we're a partnership.
See? So, I mean-
The, the eagle nest in Benita Bay is not on private property. It's on, it's right adjacent to Spring Creek.
Okay.
And you wouldn't, and being inside a gated community, you wouldn't increase the amount of foot traffic. You know, I can't, you know, I need to talk to the people that are really expert, like Jim Unland and so forth, but I'll get his views on it and then bring it back to council as an idea, not saying that, you know, anybody would be, have to do it, but as an idea about an approach.
Yes, well, there was, down on Marco Island, there was a road called Beet Bald Eagle Drive, and there was nothing built around this one tree with the eagles nesting in it. Well, son of a gun, somebody came along, cut the tree down. So they developed that area. So, there's good and bad. But I like, I like animals. I like nature. I think we could put a camera someplace where, and not tell everybody where it is, and maybe get away with it. So, that's my opinion. Thank you. Any other comment? You got it?
If you're interested in other types of birds, the great horned owls took over the nest in River Park, and they are still there nesting.
Are they protected down too?
Just, the nests and, and the, the owls and eaglets are protected themselves.
Okay, what is the golden, golden eagle? Do we have any golden eagles or are they all bald?
Well, in this area, we don't have golden eagles, just the southern bald eagle.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mayor and council items. Amy, would you like to do that?
Are we done? Um, no, they'll-
Mr. Mayor, this is not the discussion items. This is just, this is just a placeholder. Had there been any green sheets from council members, which there are none.
It was a placeholder.
Placehold.
We're at short recess if needed now. He's saying it was a placeholder. We don't have.
Okay, so city attorney?
I have nothing. You, I, I will, if you recall at the last meeting, we will be holding a executive session at your next council meeting. What I was hoping to do, I will have a draft and a settlement agreement on the stormwater utility with the Bayside and Bay Creek CDDs. I will have that for you at that meeting, as well as representatives from, from the plaintiffs should be here. And I'm thinking at this time, if it's the council's pleasure to have a short recess after the council meeting and then go right into executive session, unless you would like to set it for a specific time.
This executive meeting is everybody?
It's, it'll only be myself, Arlene, and the council members, and a court reporter. So it's not open to the public.
And one council member?
No, all the council members.
All the council members.
All the coun-
And we can make a decision out of the sunshine?
You can't make a decision. All, all you can do is discuss the terms of litigation and the settlement with me, give me advice, and then we'll actually have the settlement agreement. I just want to be able to go through all the details of it in private, and then if you approve it and, and the CDDs approve it, the case will be dismissed and we'll move forward on the settlement. At that time, the record of the executive session will become public. I believe this will be the first executive session for three of the council members, so I'll, I'll go into a little bit more detail with, with each of you ahead of the meeting so that you understand what the, what the roles and responsibilities are.
Currently, you're negotiating all this.
Correct. You've, you've authorized Councilman Forbes to be involved in those negotiations. We did, we did come up with a fruitful discussion at our last settlement discussion.
Okay. Anything else, city attorney?
Nothing else.
City manager?
Thank you, mayor and council. At this time, I'd like Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director, to come forward. We're going to begin a series of some brief presentations of items that we would like some more direction from council on as we prepare for this coming budget season in our CIP. We are in need of a family restroom at the community pool, but at that time, we had some additional previous plans that we want to remind council of and, and get some direction as we're preparing for our budget.
Correct. Good evening, Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. Arlene is correct. What we are looking at is, we have had plans since actually we hired Stantec in October of 2015 to look at constructing a children's activity pool, and that would be in addition to our current pool. So I do have some slides so you can see the exact location as well as what the design looks like, because I know not all of you have seen this or would know. So we did want to prevent, or to present to you an overview of this design to see if this is something you would like us to pursue again now that we have come to have the need for a family restroom addition. So, if you want to go to the next slide. This is just an overview of community parks so that you can see in relation to where you're at now. And you should have the presentation in your packets there too, because this is a little hard to see. But it is at the turn of Terry and Pine. So you want to go to the next one? This is the aerial of the current pool, so this is what it looks like today. This is what it looks like now. What we are looking at, keeping this as, as is and intact, currently the entrance goes through the middle of the building into the main pool. So if you want to go to the next. Just another picture of the pool itself. It is in good condition. It is, it was built in the eighties, but we do have some renovations that we do need to make to this. If you want to go to the next one? This design, I actually have given you a larger depiction of this so you can see it a little bit better than what's on the screen. But what you are looking at is, it would have a new entrance. The entrance would be what looks like a brick paver in between the new, the old pool building and the new building, which would encompass a new lifeguard office as well as two family restrooms. And I'll show you that on an additional slide. And then you can see the 2,500 square foot children's pool. Because our current pool, it does not have zero entry or stairs going down in it, so it is more of an adult competitive swimming pool. It's not a children's pool. So if you want to go to the next one? So this is what we actually had fully designed. We presented to city council, Stantec and myself presented to city council in January of 2016, the actual fully designed plan. So this is the structure at that time that we were constructing. What it looks like are palm trees, those actually shoot water out of coconuts, and it does have, they're all water features. But it is basically a water playground in about an 18 inch to 24 inch pool. So it is a kiddie pool. If you want to go to the next one? This just gives you a different view. As you can see, it is zero entry. So you would walk in, at the beginning of it is more for toddlers, and it has the splash pad that we've been talking about for several years now. So it begins off as a splash pad and then goes into the kiddie pool itself. Next one? And here's just an aerial view. All of these pictures were in the design plans that, again, are, are fully, fully complete. This was a project that we were, it was submitted for, we were submitted for LDO in April of 2016, and the project ended up being put on hold in May of 2016. So if you want to go to the next one?
And why was it put on hold?
At that time, council decided that there were just other priorities at the time, as well as due to the cost. Full construction in 2015, $16, this was at $750,000. We were slated to use park impact fees to, to construct this project, but at that time, some priorities had shifted.
And now what's the pay?
Well, that's what, actually, that's the direction that we're asking. If this is something that you would like us to pursue updated costs, we would have to go back to the original design, update any codes or anything like that that we would need to change as well as get updated pricing. So before we put out any funding to do that, we wanted to know based on, would you like us to do the family restroom only, or would you like us to go back and pursue this project as a whole?
And to make it clear, we will need to recommend in this coming fiscal year, at least at a minimum, one family restroom. I think staff's recommendation would be two restrooms, and that is a liability that we need, we need to be addressing.
Correct.
Yes, is there anybody else that's got a bid on this? We only have one person? Only one company?
Oh, no, no, it would, it would be, the project itself for construction would be bid. The design, we've, we've already, in the past, hired Stantec, which has already been bid out, bid out, and they're on our miscellaneous outdoor recreational facilities contract.
Okay, and they would design the two bathrooms?
That is something we would have to, if we decide to have them. If you actually go to further slides, I can show you.
And I'm in favor of taking care of this and doing this because it's something that people can see and use. Some of the stuff, the money we spend, they never know where it goes. They can't use it or see it, so I'm in favor of it, of this. Thank you.
Yeah, what, what we actually have on the last slide is the original building. As you can see, the, that separated the old from, and that, as designed, go back to the last slide, please. That one. And I've given that to you here as well as, it is two family restrooms along with an additional office space, because the current office space is very small, and we would like them to be social distanced a little bit better, as well as some additional storage for pool pumps if in the future you only want us to build the family restroom now and in the future build the children's activity pool, so that we are already prepared for that with the building itself. So what, what we are seeking is direction for the upcoming CIP budget. Would you like us to pursue the design of just the, the family restroom, which is what we are pretty much required to do at this point, or the project as a whole and come, and come back?
I'd make a motion to accept the project as a whole. We're 250, we're 250 deep anyway, and, yeah.
I'll second that.
And that's impact fees, right? So it's on an existing structure.
Second.
Oh, well, I'm just asking clarification. So since it's on an existing park, we can use the impact fees.
Yes, because we would be expanding capacity.
Perfect.
Okay, there's a motion and a second? Do we have any other comments? I'm in favor of building everything that we need, since the city only has parks and land use responsibilities. Let's build this for the kids. We have twice as many people as we had 20 years ago, so let's go. Thank you.
I'm, I'm in favor of having, I'm in favor of the, a larger project, particularly since we're working on the skate park. I think that, you know, we could make that quite a complex, and I think eventually we're going to have to do something about this building, even to just bring it up to code. So we might as well bring it all up pretty much to be a really place to be proud of. And then with the, I mean, we really should, and we have the baseball complex, so I don't think we should forget about that. I think we should do the whole project if we could afford it and if we have the money.
Call for a vote?
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council. My next item, I'd like Pete Higginson to come forward. He's going to give you all a brief update on, as we, as we promised, we'll be giving you regular updates on our building permit fee revenue with the reduction that we provided back in December.
Good morning, Pete.
Good morning. Good afternoon, mayor and council.
We'll get it.
Pete Higginson, the building official. In the packet, you have a, an update on the fee reductions that we instituted in January to lower the surplus of the building fund fees. First three months with a 75% reduction in billing permits and flat fees to trade permit fees, we've reduced the surplus by $261,579. And just to give you some numbers as to what would have happened if we hadn't done the reduction, we would have actually added over $350,000 to the surplus. So that would have been going in the wrong direction.
Is this money invested, making interest? Is, about $8 million we got somewhere?
I don't know what they're doing with the, the money. It's in a enterprise fund surplus. And I'm not sure if they can collect interest on it or not.
What else can they use it for?
Not much. It's all just for the building department.
It can only be utilized for expenses for the, running the actual building department. We do have a capital improvement project for scanning permitting as well as working to provide some online permitting, and that's an expense that we can utilize the funds for, but it is only to be utilized for the true expense and cost of operating the building department.
Yeah, we're updating, getting online plan review and permitting. As you may know, Lee County just is going to complete online plan review and permitting, and this is what our goal is, to do the same. And we also want online payments and, plus update the equipment, and those costs can be all utilized, the, the surplus of the building fund. But again, it has to be generated and paying for improving the building department's provision of services for which they are collecting the fees.
You can't use this for payroll.
Pardon?
You can use this for payroll.
Correct. It's, it can be used to fund the contract that we have with Jacobs Engineering for, for services. So if the contract provides for the actual staff to work, that can be provided through the building fund.
Is it possi, piggybacking on what he's saying, is it possible, you know, to pay a year in advance there by depleting the surplus and then getting us back on track? So like, if we wanted to say, all right, John and Company, you get X amount annually, we're going to write the check now. Now we're out of the surplus and we're back toward normal fees. Is that possible?
I think we, I think we looked at this question initially, and I don't think it is. I think there's an accounting issue with, with respect to that.
I believe when we-
You're, you're not paying for actual services in that year. You're pack, you're paying for future services, not accrued yet.
Our, our financial secretary's shaking her head no.
No. There's not enough there anyway. I believe it was part of the, the state required financial reporting that it didn't, there's a new, the GASP requirements, it was not consistent with the regulations for that, of accounting it as a, an asset or a cost.
Well, my opinion, you ought to spend it- Well, my opinion, I'll spend it on improvements before somebody takes it away.
Mr. Mayor? Question. On this topic, is it possible that we can pay some of the time of code enforcement when they're out looking, and they can -- when they're out looking for work that's being done without a building permit?
Correct. And I believe we have already done that. We've allocated a portion of the personnel costs of when they're directly relating code enforcement case to enforcing the building code. And I believe we've already looked at -- I think we already are currently doing that, and we continue to look at that for that opportunity.
Do we have any idea what would bring us into compliance? Six million, two million? Is there any number?
That's calculated on the actual cost of running the --
Yeah, I don't recall what the dollar amount is, but there -- statutorily, we're required to have only a multiple of our last fiscal year. And so what we have done is we've reduced the fees going forward. So right now, any homeowners' construction, anything that occurs in the city, is paying reduced building fees as a way to reduce that extra amount. We did explore other alternatives, including, you know, capital expenditures for buildings, equipment, and what we could, we did spend, but there really wasn't enough projects out there for us to do anything. That did not also increase future costs on the city for years going forward.
And I did want to clarify, I know that Pete reported that there most recently was a press release that Lee County is moving towards completely online permitting. What I spoke to John about is we'll probably have a hybrid of that, where we'll be offering all of -- as many as we can on online, but we do have some of our contractors who are still requesting to provide the written paper documents. Some of them are handwritten drawings and others such. So we're going to still accommodate people, anyone in the trades. We're still going to be able to provide and accommodate that for them.
But you did know that the fact that Lee County is going all electronic? You said --
Correct, yes. And we're going to be doing, ours somewhat of a hybrid of that, where we'll be providing electronic, but still have an opportunity for those to provide their permanent person to.
The county is still will allow owner builders, not professionals, to be able to submit paper documents and handle things the old-fashioned way.
I didn't know I'd be old-fashioned already, but anyways. Anything else with the information?
That concludes the update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The other item I wanted to address was, we would like to present you officially with the distribution of the city's emergency operations plan. And this is in compliance with FEMA, and this would help us in future grant applications. Of course, Mayor and Council previously adopted Resolution 20-13. At this time, we're not recommending any updates or changes to the plan. We'd just like this to be for the record and receipt for this upcoming storm season. Additionally, Neighborhood Services, Tony Backers will be working with our neighborhood community partners in the future to -- prior to the beginning of storm season, we'll be doing our annual update with our folks from FPNL, BSU, Waste Management, and others to come forward and give us an update on their plans for the storm season. I understand there is a new director for the EOC of Operations. I'm not sure if we'll be able to have them come speak with us, but we'll try to get a representative from Lee County to be available too. But we'll be planning that update for you in the upcoming future very shortly. We are being prepared, and all of us are continuing our training as well. That is a year-long process to update us for our June 1st beginning of storm season. So, yippee. I'd like to also talk to you that coming up forward is, we'll be working to schedule with you all a workshop on our CIP. We want to begin our budgeting process coming. Now that Lisa is on board with us, we'd like to start that process as soon as possible, and then look to be bringing you the budget schedule coming here very soon, so we can start those budget workshops in June and July and August. So Debbie will be reaching out to you to work on dates for your available for that coming season as well. Additionally, I wanted to give you an update on the Lover's Key address. Councilmember Pardon was able to forward us some information for the federal contact with the U.S. Postal Service. I would like to thank our Benita Springs postmaster, who coordinated with Carly very closely. I'm happy to announce that there was a previous correspondence at some point in time with some residents from Benita Springs. We haven't located that was officially from the city, but there are residents in the city limits who have the ZIP Code 33931, who are welcome to use Benita Springs as the city, and also Lover's Key. The actual preferred -- the preferred city address for Lover's Key State Park is Benita Springs. I have been in contact with Mark Generalis, who is a member of the Friends of Lover's Key. They are coordinating with the state park manager to use on future documents and letterhead and correspondence, the city of Benita Springs as the address line, but they are working through a final approval from the state on that process. In the interim, they already have printed materials, and because of cost, they wouldn't be changing anything they currently have. It would be for, if the change goes through, it would be for future correspondence that they change to Benita Springs. So if there are -- I know that Councilman Gibson had some inquiries. If there are residents who are in the Benita Springs city limits, who have ZIP Code 33931, they are eligible to list Benita Springs as their address, and they will still receive their mail.
Any chance of changing Estero Boulevard to Benita Causeway? The name of the road there? Lee County Road?
We did share that with Lee County staff, so we'll continue to update if we hear anything more, but we did share that comment, Mayor, with the Lee County staff, was that.
Thank you.
And the only other update I wanted to give you a little bit of information on is some local COVID vaccines that have been occurring. I understand that Cafe of Life, the Lee County Health Department, and with the help of Sheila Morales coordinating with them, was able to provide 200 vaccines at Cafe of Life today. I understand there is scheduled to provide vaccines in the Pueblo-Benita neighborhood as well. That's upcoming. And Sheila informed me that if you go to the Hope Lutheran Church website in Benita Springs, there is currently eligible vaccines for April 15th. If you are fortunate enough to be able to log on and receive an appointment, you will automatically be rescheduled for your second vaccine in a few weeks at that same time at Hope Lutheran Church in their sanctuary. So you can go onto their website. Additionally, if someone needs help registering, who can't get on a website, or need language assistance, they can call the church directly, and they do have Spanish-speaking receptionists who can help as well.
Very good. Very nice. Councilmembers' reports. Do you have any reports? Amy?
I was fortunate to participate in the Blue Star Memorial presentation, and I just want to recognize Susie Valentine, who worked so hard at the garden club to put that together. And I understand that Matt Feeny worked diligently with them to finally bring that to fruition. It's really an asset to all 41, and if any of you have not been down there, take a look there. And I also went to the Naples Botanical Garden, but I saw a couple of others there, so I'll let them answer that.
Jesse?
The Lover's Key thing, I'm just so happy that's able to work out, because for those of you who don't know, we really have a gem in Lover's Key. It's the second most visited state park in the entire state of Florida. So for them to have the Benita Springs address is just really great for us, I think. So I'm really happy that was able to work out, and if you guys need anything forward, obviously, let us know. Just from the water side, I just wanted to share a couple things with you from the congressional office. We put in and signed on for $725 million for the next four years for Florida Everglades restoration, and that is essentially going to keep things moving as far as cert projects go, and that is -- that's what they've asked for right now at this juncture, and we've put in for that. Additionally, we did a letter along the same lines as the city did and as the county did on Losom, and I won't -- we're still gathering signatures, so it's a draft. I wanted to have a copy for you today, but I want to read a paragraph to you all, because it pertains to Congressman Mast's bill. So those of you who've been following this, there is a piece of legislation right now in Washington, D.C., that essentially would make it so that St. Luci -- okay, so for those of you who are unfamiliar with how Laco drains, you can go to the east or you can go to the west, right? This piece of legislation that Congressman Mast from the other coast has put out essentially would say that St. Luci wouldn't be involved in freshwater releases. So if there's only two places to go, then that would mean the Colusahatchee is going to get hosed. And additionally, being two and a half feet higher than it's been for the past two years, for us in southwest Florida, that's very concerning. So being that he's in the federal office, we decided we would write a letter to Army Corps as well, after we saw that bill. So here's just an excerpt from this, and I'll get you all the official effort signed on by some other Congress folks. "We cannot continue to allow the Colusahatchee to be the reprieve for South Florida Water Management System. Additionally, it's irresponsible to let Florida's hard work and taxpayers carry the burden of an inefficient mitigation structure. It is also reckless and unjustifiable to implement proposed legislation that seeks to eliminate discharges from one particular area because of public safety concerns, yet allow the extra discharge to enter into another area without the state due to consideration. It is critical that the Corps recognize the need of all parties involved and ensure this system is stable and balanced. Our collaborative commitment should pursue an equitable solution for all Floridians rather than showing favor to any portion of Florida." So we did directly address the bill, because the bill was aimed at our coast, and when that's done, I'll get that out too. And last but not least, I'm going to be bringing a green sheet next week -- I'm sorry, not next week, next meeting, so we can discuss going live 4th of July fireworks. So I really would like Benita Springs to be the first municipality in southwest Florida to announce that we're going to go back to a live fireworks. We did such a great job last year, virtually. I think it would be a great sign for us to announce it, and maybe other cities will follow suit. And if they don't, we can just let them see that we have the most freedom per capita in all southwest Florida here in Benita Springs. So that's all of that.
Thank you very much, Jesse. Keep up the good work. Yes, young lady. Younger lady.
Well, I was at a wonderful party.
Speak to the microphone, please.
I was at a wonderful Mast party at the Wonder Gardens, and it was well-attended. And actually, I think they were kicking people out at 12 o'clock at night. And then Lover's Key, Discovery Cove, had its soft opening, and it's so beautiful. It's wonderful. If you haven't been there, you must go. It's just really terrific. And then the botanical gardens ran into Amy and her wonderful husband, and Jesse, and our congressman, and his wife, and family. So we had a, you know, sort of lovely little chat there. And it's the fire department that we need to get on their case to do a 4th of July parade. I say yes. Parade. So, I don't know.
Did you get on them yet? Did you contact them?
Well, actually, Monday, Monday, the second Monday in the month is the meeting. And this month, I won't be able to be there, but I will contact the Steve Lohan. No, well --
Goes to the board, okay. Steve Lohan's the top of the board.
So I wouldn't bother Greg with that. He'll make the decision.
Well, it's sponsored by the union, so maybe --
Well, you know more than me, but --
No, I'm just saying, it is sponsored, it has been sponsored by the union.
Okay.
I don't know who to contact, but the Firemen's Union.
Okay.
Lohan is not a union guy, and neither is the chief.
Well, he's a good guy, and they're both good guys, and I'm just going to say, it would be nice to have a parade, and they're in charge of it.
I'm trying to -- I'm just trying to help you out.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Fred, you got anything for us tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay. Mike, no. Chris?
Yeah, I think people would be interested in what Arlene talked about in terms of emergency management. I don't know if you caught a newspaper article or not about Florida Power and Light. They've got a major amount of money that they're spending in Benita Springs to harden their electrical services. And I think those of us who live here full-time, especially in storm season, and with respect to other times, which seem to make no sense, we're constantly fighting the electricity going out, resetting clocks and everything else, but especially in storm season, we need to maintain electricity as best we can. So I think people, when we get around to that discussion, hopefully, I've asked Arlene to invite FPNL to come in and talk about the hardening efforts that they're going to be undertaking in Benita Springs, so we have a better understanding of what they're doing, and how long it's going to take, and what the commitment is. So stay tuned.
Yes, I read that they're going to work on Arroyo and the Beach Road, that they're going to, that's where they're going to be hardening. Also, Lee County is supposed to be doing some work. All started on the 1st of April. I haven't seen anything out there yet, but anyways. I turned, I gave out blueprints of the bamboo property, and I sketched out what I think is possible on that property, and I gave it to Derek, and he -- so I, maybe I'm the first one to actually make a suggestion, so. I wanted some influence.
And you got the money?
Huh?
Nothing.
Anyways, the Dixie Moon or Goodbred property building has been worked on, painted. It looks beautiful. It's worth every effort. People want a welcome center there. We've talked about, Arlene and I talked about, request for proposal for somebody to work at that welcome center, not as an employee of ours, but sort of like the cottages are rented. That wouldn't be, we wouldn't have any personnel involved. We can use the bathrooms in the Lyles Hotel and as a band shell. We'll be coming up with the budget to see what else we can do for landscaping and such. So I'm real happy to see a cleaned-up area right there in the center of our park. I guess, anything else? We can go with the minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second. Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McRumba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye.
Okay, folks, any more public comment? Please come forward. Anybody, all you people at home, send your emails to the city, or send them to me, or call me at 992-3018. We need your input to do our job. So the next meeting, what's the next meeting? Arlene?
April 21st.
I should have --
It's the 1st and 3rd?
It's in two weeks. April 21st. It'll be April 21st at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn? Any other business? We're done? We're adjourned. Thank you.